Will the clerk please read the preamble?
Thank you. In accordance with the applicable statutes of the state of Illinois and the ordinance of the city of Prospect Heights, notice is hereby given that the city council meeting of the mayor and the city council of the city of Prospect Heights is being held on Monday, February 26, 2024, at 6:30 p.m., in person in the council chambers, Prospect Heights City Hall, 8 North Elmhurst Road, Prospect Heights, Illinois. Mayor Patrick Levickson presiding. This meeting will be broadcast live on cable channels Comcast and Astone, RCN Channel 17, and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99. It will also be recorded and televised on Comcast and Astone, RCN Channel 17, and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99. Attendees who wish to speak on agenda or non-agenda items will be provided an opportunity during the meeting. There's a five-minute time limit for speakers.
Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Alderman Morgan Adams.
Alderman Morgan Adams, here. Alderman Cameron.
Here.
Alderman Dash.
Here.
Alderman Anderson.
Here.
Alderman Dolick.
Here.
Thank you. Please stand for the pledge.
(inaudible) United States of America, we stand one nation under God, in the judicial liberty and justice law.
Item three, approval of minutes. I would need a motion to approve item A, the February 12, 2024 city council regular meeting minutes. Yeah, omnibus, yes. And item B, the September 13, 2021 city council executive session minutes, but not for public release. Is a motion to approve?
So move, Morgan Adams.
Second, Cameron.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cameron.
Aye.
Alderman Dolick.
Abstain.
Alderman Anderson.
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams.
Aye.
Alderman Dash.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Item four, presentation from Chicago Executive Airport, monthly report by Chicago Executive Airport Board of Director, Mr. Bill Currie.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, elected officials, city staff. I bring you greetings from Chicago Executive Airport, as usual. I feel a little bit nervous. This could be my last report. If things don't go well, I'm next out a little bit. But assuming they do, I'll just pull forward here.
Just speak loud, so we can hear you.
There you go. Numbers-wise, our 12-month operations were just under 97,000 operations through January. 12-month fuel flowage, 7,764,000-plus gallons, so just slightly under the high watermark we set last year, but still well above our averages historically. Budget-wise, with January being the 75th month, or 75% of our budget would be normally where we're at. We're sitting just under 80% on the revenue side, and expenses are only about 62 and a half. The mild conditions for the weather have helped us with overtime costs, purchasing of fluids, deicing fluids and so forth, so we're doing, you know, doing well there. We have some other things, new equipment. We're purchasing a new snow broom from MB. Cost is approximately $800,000, and we'll be putting two older snow brooms up for auction. We're working, collaborating with Sky Harbor on the new development, which is primarily in Prospect Heights. I think most of you know that. The anticipated timeline for the entire build-out is currently six years, and we do have some challenges with water, storm water, that we're working through. We're pretty confident we can get, be able to comply with MWRD on those and our local regulations. So we're currently evaluating the space for the 15-hanger complex with assistance from Primera Engineering, and Sky Harbor is seeking a 6B designation from both Wheeling and Prospect Heights for this project, as they're taking currently unutilized land and developing that. Plans are in progress for the Rock and Run, the runway this year. It's going to operate in the same way it did last year, the normal space. However, in the future, if Sky Harbor proceeds, whether it's next year, the year after, we're looking at contingency plans to move that further into the airport. Infrastructure project-wise, we're in the planning process to move our tie-down area, which is currently right in front of Hawthorne there, and move that to the northeast corner of the airport. It's a $2.6 million project funded by the bipartisan infrastructure law, and it's slated to start in the summer of 2025. This year, we've got a project, a ramp project between Sumac and Tower Road that's supposed to start here in May of '24, and it's funded by the state's Rebuild Illinois program, and that's a budget of $1.1 million. As far as budget and security, we're working, we did a first draft of our budget at our meeting last week, and we'll be scheduled to present that budget to the two communities here in April. And with some security concerns that have been brought along, we're putting in place access control measures as far as access to the airfield, reducing the number of people that have access, and we've credentialed over 800 people that require airfield access at this point. We're doing some new reviews of our procedures and vendors, and we're currently reviewing responses to RFPs for a new auditing firm that we went out for and potential changes to our IT consultant. We also have our janitorial service out for an RFP at this point. Hawthorne's new hangar that they built there on Tower Road is complete. They have a certificate of occupancy, and it's operational. We should be seeing some kind of an open house as soon as the weather is consistently better. Design Group 845, we've hired to update our needs assessment, focusing on a new location for the administration building and also perhaps community enhancement building that we'd be looking at in combination with the offices. Finally, there's just a couple updates. We're gearing up to hire our summer interns with outreach efforts targeting higher education institutions and high school. And the RSIP update, sound insulation build-out has started for the Phase One, which remember, we had our pilot phase, and now we're doing Phase One this spring and summer, and Phase One covers 19 homes. Phase Two, we've submitted some plans for, which is multifamily and single-family homes. The multifamily homes would be Willow Heights and Prospect Heights. And we're, we're working, I should say, Penny from the office over there is working to try and get the FAA to give us an override on their requirement to have 30% testing of all the units within a building before they would let us do the sound insulation for a couple reasons. Mainly that there are some areas that it's just too hard to get test equipment up to the upper floors and do effective testing, so we're, we're appealing to them and see if we can get that thing overruled on the, some of the testing requirements that they have. Okay? That's really about all I had to cover at this point. Answer, be willing to answer any questions.
Any questions? Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Who are next here on appointments and confirmations? Item A, the reappointment of Bill Currie to the Chicago Executive Board, Airport Board of Directors. Would you like for a motion to approve his reappointment?
So move. Second. Second, Morgan Adams.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Anderson.
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams.
Aye.
Alderman Dolick.
Aye.
Alderman Dash.
Aye.
Alderman Cameron.
Aye.
Thank you. You didn't think you'd get out that easy, right?
Nothing to be nervous about.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Thanks for your capacity.
Item B, the appointment of Frank Chen to the Tourism District Board of Directors. If you want to come up.
Thank you, everybody, for giving me the opportunity. I'll be overtaking Holly Augauer's position as a general manager for Hilton Chicago-Northbrook, and in turn as the part of the Board of Director for Tourism District. We're really looking to bring some impact with the new ownership and also new management team at the hotel, and we need to bring some more guests to the region.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Holly has submitted her resignation, so there is a vacancy. So I would look for our motions to approve Mr. Chen to fill that vacancy.
So move.
Second, Morgan Adams.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call, please. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Dash.
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams.
Aye.
Alderman Anderson.
Aye.
Alderman Dolick.
Aye.
Alderman Cameron.
Aye.
Thank you. You are appointed. Thank you. Item six, public comment on agenda matters. Do we have any requests?
Yes, we have one person by the name of Jerry Simmons, please.
Please state your name.
Jerry Simmons.
Thank you.
I'm representing the River Trails condo association. I'm on the Board of Directors. Alderman Cameron called me last month. I missed the meeting, and I watched it, and I wanted to say thank you. I don't want to be the guy that's always here complaining, and we're just, we are just buried over there. I mean, between the fires, the crime, and the insurance, it's just insanity. And I know I sent some colorful and opinionated emails to Joe and Mark and Dan and Michelle, so I want to say thanks for not forgetting about us. It was, it really is something that's going to mean a lot to those residents. It's $600,000 per year in insurance that is paid on 361 units, and they've had, you know, we've had to put a special assessment on, we've had to raise the assessments, and I just take my hat off to you guys for helping. That's all.
I'd like to say this is it, but after 28 years of this project going on, I don't think that can ever be said.
Joe Wade told me it'll be over before March. So that's what I told him.
That'll be promised.
You might need some extra seats March 2nd, but it's not the end. I understand that it's not the end, and I know you guys aren't going to stop fighting, and I know that Joe and Mark anyway are, came up with this idea of using that money, and I wouldn't, I don't know anything about running a government or anything. I just, it's just a sin that there's no threat of flooding, but yet we have to have the flood insurance. It's not just River Trails either. There's several associations back there, and there's lots of single-family homes, too. So I just didn't want to be the guy that's always complaining. Dan puts his hat down every time he sees me, so thank you. I want to thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
No.
That's it? Okay. We have no old, we have no consent agenda or old business, so we'll go to number nine, new business. Item A, Resolution 2408, staff memo and resolution authorizing the use of special service Area Eight levy use monies to fund a portion of costs for the storm sewer mediation at Levy Wall. Are we in a motion to approve?
So move. Cameron.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Joe, do you want to add anything?
Sure. As I mentioned at the last meeting, that this is a way that, that we can move this project forward. As I referenced, the Corps of Engineers as a designation of the Levy 37 project is funded to completion, which means that they have a limited amount of money to go forward, and unfortunately, this project exceeds that amount. However, we do have special service Area Eight monies, as Mr. Simmons alluded to, and I want to say, too, Mr. Simmons had colorful emails. I will say that no, certainly Mark or myself did not disagree with anything that was stated, so. But, but at any rate, as it stands, the project is at a standstill. The only way we can move it forward is to become a participant, and we do have that ability through the special service Area Eight funding. As referenced, we are paying through a number of associations, individual property owners, hundreds of thousands of dollars for flood insurance. If we don't move forward, it might be maybe two, three years before we can get additional federal funding, in which the cost-benefit analysis of that to our community, it's just not working. So the staff recommendation is to utilize special service Area Eight monies to supplement the Corps of Engineer money. We will come back, if it's approved tonight, we will come back to you with a formal intergovernmental agreement, but this keeps the project going. And Mark Roscoe was on Friday's call. Mark, where are you, sir?
Right.
Yeah. We, we are going through those, it's always complicated, the more agencies you deal with, there's more clearances, there's more reviews, but Friday's call was pretty positive as far as where we're at with.
It was.
With permitting and submittals.
As Joe mentioned, there's a lot of different agencies involved, and one of our biggest obstacles on Friday gave us the green light. So that was an agency that we just had a little trouble getting with their head around the project, and finally it all came through as move forward with what we need to do now with the intergovernmental agreements and the cost-sharing paperwork. So there's a little bit more of that, and Joe's been instrumental, and they wanted to start pushing the calls off to once a month or once every other month, and we've kept them on track. Even if there's not a lot to offer, we're, we're getting on those calls and keeping, keeping on the fryer, so this is, it's another step in the right direction. It's a big step. We didn't know we'd have to take this step months ago, so.
The second part of this challenge, first of all, we've got to get the Levy breach addressed, where the I.D.A. storm sewers. We've got an engineering plan for that. We're in the process of getting permitting. We'll go out for bid for that, but we're also very much aware that that's only the first step, because we want to get this area remapped as quickly as possible, because through remapping is actually when we get certification, and then we can also remove properties from that flood insurance requirement, which, which is hundreds of thousand dollars of year, dollars of year through our community. We've, we've made that point, I think, very clear to, that that's a major concern of the city, to the agency representatives. Also, certainly, our congressional representative is very much aware, their staff is watching it, so we can hopefully get some help, nudges from them, too, and they want to help. But we can't do any of that until we step forward tonight and get this authorization so that we can become a participant. It's, it's not, certainly, it's not the, the best way to go about this, but we don't want to sacrifice the good for the perfect.
Yes, and I believe we've been told, too, that if we move forward, there's chances of us getting some kind of refund or any kind of money back, or slim to none, and Slim just left out, so this is a one-way decision, a big expenditure that's, that we won't be able to get back, but we've determined that we have to, we have to move forward, because otherwise, who knows what will happen? So that's what we're doing, and that's it, Joe. We have a first and a second on the approval of the resolution. A roll call, please.
Alderman Dolick.
Aye.
Alderman Anderson.
Aye.
Alderman Dash.
Aye.
Alderman Cameron.
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Item B, Resolution 24-09, staff memo and resolution requesting a bid waiver and approving the use of Drug Enforcement Agency funds for the renovation and purchase of replacement workspace areas for patrols, investigations, and records, cabinets, conference table, chairs, for the amount of $83,518.84, which includes installation. Is a motion and a second to discuss it?
So move.
Second, Morgan Adams.
We have a motion and a second. Chief, would you like to talk about it?
Sure. The office furniture that we currently have is going on 13, it's going on 13 years. It was designed, we think, a little bit, rather poorly. Every other police agency that I know of, their detective division is in a separate workspace, and because I worked as a detective or detective sergeant for 10 years, I could tell you that we need a separate workspace. Many times, we're on the phone with witnesses, victims, state's attorneys, and we're hearing noise from all over the station, including people, walk-ins, other officers on other phones. We also need detectives, that is, need their own conference room table. Again, because not only do they confer with other detectives from other agencies, but state's attorneys, victims, witnesses, and our interview room is in the back where the detectives are currently, and many times when you play back audio, you can hear noise from the surrounding area. So what we want to do is put a wall between patrol and the detective division, also utilize the workspaces where they're more wide open, kind of, for instance, patrol, there's two times four, so there's cubicles side by side. What we want to do is open it up so that there is no dividing side by side. And in the detective division, we want to put all four desks along the wall to make room for a conference table. Again, functionality, it's, it's going to be terrific, and again, we'll be good for office furniture for 12 and 15 more years.
And the funding?
Is coming straight out of our DEA fund. We have a detective assigned to DEA, and the money that comes, the money to pay for this comes from the seized asset, the seized money from his work and past detective's work over the years. So we have it there. We're not going to be borrowing any of it. There is some, we have over a million dollars also coming, and it's hard to tell when the courts release that money, but it will be replenished and then some.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any questions? We have a first and a second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Morgan Adams.
Aye.
Alderman Cameron.
Aye.
Alderman Dash.
Aye.
Alderman Anderson.
Aye.
Alderman Dolick.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Item C, Resolution 24-10, a resolution approving the destruction of certain closed-session audio recordings. Is a motion?
So move.
Second, Anderson.
We have a motion and a second, just for the, that's a pretty generic description there, so maybe we could just give a 15-second, non-lawyer description of what that is.
Sure. The law requires closed-session minutes to be recorded. The city records them on audiotape, keeps them for the required amount of time. Every, so often, they have to be reviewed, and then, so the city doesn't have over backlog of tapes just sitting around. They are reviewed and then approved to be destroyed. These are just the audio-recorded minutes, the actual written minutes, as far as the release, get released at a different quote, so that, once they are considered, even if they keep confidential, and for any reason, they are released, and the actual minutes will should be coming up soon for consideration for release.
Thank you. Any questions? So we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Dolick.
Aye.
Alderman Anderson.
Aye.
Alderman Dash.
Aye.
Alderman Cameron.
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Item 10, staff elected officials and commission reports. Today, we have the January financial report presented. The finance director.
Presented by me there, Mayor.
Right.
She's out today.
She's out today.
So, thanks, Mayor, city council members. Present the financial report for January of 2024. Notice that three-quarters of us fiscal year has passed. We have 68 point, 66.8% total city revenues and 53.9% of expenses of the budget for this, three-quarters of this year. Water and sewer revenues and expenditures are in line with budget expectations. We are in the vehicle sticker campaign right now. We just started this month. Vehicle sticker sales have started and have been consistent flow of residents coming in, making their purchases. Also, the finance department and department heads have met over the last couple of weeks. We're developing the fiscal '25 budget, and then we have a meeting this week with all department's heads to put together our budget presentations for next month's council meetings on the 11th and 25th for next month. So everything's looking good for the finances right now, and everyone's putting, working hard to make sure the budget's in a good, good line for the coming years, so. Anybody's had any questions?
Any questions? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Let's go with elected official reports to my left. Anybody have any reports? Am I right? Any reports? I have something very short. It was in Springfield, Wednesday, with the Northwest Municipal Conference Legislative Day, Days. We go down there and meet with our state reps and state senators, and it happened to be the day when the budget, when the budget was announced by the governor, and there are a lot of surprises in that, that we're still trying to figure out the ramifications from, but I can assure you, none, none of them are going to see us any more money. It's likely that we're going to lose even more money. So we will be working with our elected officials in Springfield to try and prevent, prevent that, because the state has created a bunch of programs they want to fund, they figured out a way to get it, and most of where they're getting it from is the municipalities, so same old story, just different here. So we'll let you know more about that when we know the impact of what some of these items are. It was a good, it was a good time down there to meet with the state reps. They're very willing to listen to us, which was very good. Okay. Staff reports. Start on our left. Chief?
Jerry's gone right now, but from River Trails. I just thought it was a fresh breath, fresh air to hear somebody come in here and compliment the city. We all know how hard the city works, and it's nice for him to acknowledge. Also want to acknowledge them for being great community partners. They've allowed us to use their gym for multiple of our meetings, our east side safety meetings, and I literally, and I mean literally, have the keys to the clubhouse in my office. I can use it pretty much, just let them know, and they're, yes, I do.
I'll come tomorrow.
So they're, they're great. I just want to compliment them. That's all I have.
Thank you.
I'm jealous.
Anybody else on the left? On the right? On the line? Joe?
Thank you. Two items. We, as councils are aware, March budget meetings are coming up. We posted these meetings at 6:30 p.m., like tonight or all of our other meetings. We're asking for consideration because we do have regular meeting business on that, those evenings as well, and budget presentations do take some time. Just to bring up that consideration, the council would like to move that to 6:00 p.m.
Is everybody okay? That would be the next three meetings?
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, I think really the next three, probably, yeah. That first meeting in April, sometimes there's follow-up with that.
I'd be in favor of that.
So would I. Be in favor as well.
Yeah, I would. I kind of figured we were going to, because.
I think we've done that historically.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We just didn't post it.
Okay.
The second item is, is my mistake, and I apologize. I overlooked this when we drew up the city meeting calendar, but for, I believe it's the second meeting in April, which I don't have a calendar, I believe it's the 22nd, that's Passover, and it begins sundown, sundown Monday night. Consistently with what we've done with other holidays, I'm just asking for consideration if we could move that to the following Wednesday.
That Wednesday or the following? That Wednesday or the following?
The, the, that, that Wednesday, which follows.
The twenty-fourth?
Yes.
Okay. Do we need a motion to amend the?
I'm going to have, that may conflict with PZBA, but I can talk to them tomorrow on Wednesday night to see about moving to our night, because with the new change, we moved to Wednesdays. But I'm, we have a meeting on this Wednesday, the twenty-eighth, and I can ask them for the consideration, move it to one night or the other.
I guess we could, we could finalize that at the next meeting.
Or we could move ours to the Tuesday, if it makes it.
Is this definitely a?
Oh, okay. All right. I, I, I don't see us having an issue with moving it to the Thursday night, just for the month.
And how many meetings in April are we moving to six o'clock?
Just one.
The eighth?
Yes, the, the two meetings in March and the first meeting in April.
I don't, I don't think we need a motion since we already made that change at the time of the budget. Maybe we, or did we not?
For the, for the, for the budget meetings?
For, no, for the, for the change in the meeting on that twenty-second.
Do we need the, do we have to have an official listing of this?
I can't, I mean, you, as long as you, you don't need to go through an official vote to change it, it just needs to be posted accordingly, according to the Open Meetings Act. So I think it was discussed, I don't think it was previous, I think it was agreed to, but it was never formally approved. It doesn't need to be, just make sure we post proper. Just for IELTS.
There's no requirement to pre-list all meetings for a year?
No, we usually do list them, but just for convenience, so then we just want to make sure we post it.
Okay.
Probably post ahead of time that it's not going to be happening.
So we'll make that change and we'll announce it at the meeting before that that date's changed. Okay. Anybody else for the report? No? Okay, will the clerk read the warrants for the approval of the warrants?
The total of expenditures amounted to a hundred-and-seventy-seven-thousand-nine-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars and eighty-four cents. We had a wire payment on February ninth, twenty-twenty-four, payroll amounted to a hundred-and-seventy-nine-thousand-two-hundred-and-seven dollars and thirty-two cents. The January IMRF payment amounted to eleven-thousand-five-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars and eighty cents. Total warrant, total, excuse me, is three-hundred-and-sixty-eight-thousand-seven-hundred-and-five dollars and ninety-six cents for our council's approval tonight.
Need a motion to approve?
So move.
Second, Anderson.
Have a motion and a second. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Anderson.
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams.
Aye.
Alderman Dolick.
Aye.
Alderman Dash.
Aye.
Alderman Cameron.
Okay, so that, roll call, motion passes. Thank you. Any public comment on non-agenda matters?
No.
No? No executive session? So item fifteen, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
A motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. We are adjourned. Thank you.